Good evening. Welcome to the September 13, 2012 council meeting of Macedonia. May I have a roll call, please, Ms. Sarcisi?
Mr. Parker.
Here.
Ms. Darrow.
Here.
Mr. Engel.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Mr. Monarch.
Here.
I would like to ask Nick Monarch to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and also invite Nick Monarch to say our invocation for tonight's meeting. Double job.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to divide the United States of America into two republics for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This past Tuesday marked the 11th anniversary of the attack of our great country. I'd just like to take a moment of silence to remember all the innocent souls lost on that day. Amen.
The first order of business tonight is acceptance of the financial report. Do I have a motion for such? Make a motion to accept the finance report.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. opposed. Financial report is accepted. We're gonna go into the part of our meeting where we invite the public to come up, make comments. We ask you to come to a microphone right here at the front, state your name and your address. Are there any public comments this evening?
If you don't mind, I'll just stand here.
And I think you're gonna be fine. Folks, I'm very honored to have Mike here tonight. Mike has been a councilman here in Macedonia. He's a heck of a guy. Nice to see you, Mike.
Okay. I'm here this evening to vent a little bit. After watching the -- and I have some things written down and then after I'm done, council can respond. After watching the last council meeting, I had to come to vent a little bit. Mr. Martin suggested council consider appropriating funds to help renovate the manor house. How could council even consider this? This when this money can be put to much better use, such as paving roads. For example, South Bedford is like driving down a washboard. I bet if you asked your department, they could come up with many uses for this money and consider the quarter percent income tax revenue that the city will be losing in about a year or so. There's been a manor house committee for the past 25-plus years. I commend them for the time and efforts that they've given. Nothing has been accomplished. The city engineer condemned this house in 2007 and said it would cost over $500,000 to renovate. I'm sure the cost would be much more today. Summit County Health Department performed an inspection and found several violations. They asked the building department to inform them of their plans to correct these problems, to remedy such adverse conditions. Has the EPA been notified as required relating to asbestos removal? This should be done before any work is done. The house has been inspected by a couple of architectural firms. They're in agreement that the house should be inspected by a structural engineer and that life and safety issues should be addressed prior to any restoration work being done. Mr. Deemer was asked by Mayor Corney whether or not direction, control, or supervision of the manor house can be allocated to another person other than the mayor by either the Parks and Recreation Commission or by city council. Mr. Deemer's opinion was that such a delegation would violate the charter, specifically Section 3.03. Mr. Hanslick informed council that the full amount of money for the restoration must be in hand before any work can be done. City ordinance, as you well know, states that a condemned structure is to be demolished or renovated in three months and no longer than six. It's been five years. As I see it, council has taken over the mayor's authority on this matter. You're ignoring the law department and not complying with city ordinance. Council should decide if they want to appropriate $500,000 to $700,000 to renovate the house or give the mayor control of the house. And I didn't come here this evening to ask council to demolish the house or renovate the house. I would just like a decision to be made. This has been going on for over 25 years.
All right. Mike, thank you very much for coming. South Bedford Road is an issue with us. Just so you know, that tonight we had a special meeting of the road committee and we're trying to find out ways that we can get funding. Originally, it was promised to me perhaps four, as much as four years ago, that that road money to be fixed was secured in the transportation bill. Yeah, our congressman promised me that. The transportation bill passed. The congressman's money was not in there, not only for Macedonia but for many communities. And the congressman is no longer chairman of the transportation committee. Our congressman got us money not only as far as earmarks, safety funds, AMETS funds, issue funds, and he's gone. But the reason he's gone is because he was let down. So he's telling everybody, you know what? I'm outta here because I made all these promises and I can't keep my word. And that's not Congressman LaTuret. That's not how he operates. There's a lot of politicians that'll promise you the world, but not that man. All right? So now we have to reassess. What can we do? I have a great staff. They come up with good ideas. Tonight, we were talking about the possibility of doing that road and adding a lane by the high school. Why? Well, for one thing, it's a mess as far as traffic goes. And the other thing is, by doing that, we could get funding. It gives us an opportunity, a window, to reach through and maybe grab as much as a million dollars. It's a $2 million job that way. So we still have a ways to go, but we're looking at ways to get it to be the best it can be, yet not have our residents pay the whole tab. So we're very concerned about your road. We're very, doing things about it as best we can.
It's not just my road in unconcern.
Yes.
I'd just like to say one more thing. When I was on council, the manor house was an issue at that time. And I made a motion which passed not to expend any more city funds towards the manor house. And as far as I know, that's never been overturned.
It has not. Right now, the funding that's being done is being done volunteer work mostly. And the manor house committee is raising funds. We're at a very critical time, Mike, because the manor house committee has until March of next year to let's either get it fixed or look at other options. So there is, there is a deadline out there.
But as Mr. Hanslick stated at a meeting, the complete cost of the renovation has to be in hand before any work can be done.
Well, it's interesting, this issue goes so far back. I've been on council for, for seven years now. It's been, it's been an issue then and since you were on. It's happened well before me. So it's, you know, Mr. Miller, his last term, you had a, had a proposal to make a decision and we've never wanted to make a decision. I'm not sure why that's.
I believe, Mr. Parker, at one time, when the mayor asked for some direction, you were the only one that spoke up and said, you have to get this together and make a decision.
Yeah, we, our job is to make decisions and we actually, we failed in that.
I think the difficulty came, and give a little history, I don't know if you're aware of it, but when we talked about raising the house, it was somewhere in excess of $70,000. And in terms of the asbestos, you would have to remove that as well. And I believe that cost was $60,000. So right there, we're at, what, $130,000 to knock that thing down. I guess the thought, in my mind, was, you know, if you put a roof on it, you can at least band-aid it so that the damages not continue to occur. So if we're gonna spend $120,000 to drop the thing, why wouldn't we put a new roof on it to try and raise it back up? That was always a difficulty that I've had with it because that's an awful lot of money just to knock a house down when you can put it right back into it. But like you said, we, we can't put money into it.
$70,000 is a lot less than $500,000 to $700,000.
That's not an accurate figure. The figure that Mr. Casmer gave us and what he has right now to get it from beginning to end was somewhere in excess of $350,000. Now that's everything. That, the house is sparkling brand-new.
Has any plans been submitted to the planning commission?
I have to refer it to Mr. Martin.
Yes, we got a building permit for the main beam in the front of the house to replace that. That's gonna be done this weekend.
Has the EPA been there to address the asbestos issue?
That has to be addressed if it's disturbed. That was my understanding. If you disturb the asbestos, then you go into remediation, I believe it's called.
My understanding, what I have, is that prior to any renovation, any work at all being done, EPA has to come in and determine the asbestos problem.
I'd have to defer that to our building commissioner, building head.
If you recall, we had, when Route 82 was going on, we took down the caretaker's house in the back. And at that time, we had an independent company come in and do all the work for our asbestos.
PSI?
Yes.
And did they give a quote at that time of what the manor house?
Yeah, but I don't recall what it was.
Scott, $13,000 from us in matching funds will buy us how much for demolition from the county?
I believe the county was gonna give $50,000.
$57,000? It's $50-some-thousand.
Right.
All right, so there's something going on right now that's entering into the mix too, where the county is helping the communities demolish homes that have been abandoned, have been foreclosed, and they're becoming an eyesore. And we will be putting that into our next budget at the discretion, of course, of council. And we're not saying that that money is only for the manor house, but it's another source of funding and that's what this is all about. The more we can do with spending, the less money we can from the taxpayers, the better off we are. So county's gonna do something for us next year, but our matching part of that would be 13, is that correct?
Yes.
So there's, there's funding sources coming up, there's a deadline that's coming up, all these things are happening. I think we're coming towards some kind of conclusion. Alls I can say is I give John a lot of credit because he works hard. John, you wanna say something?
Yeah, please.
Come on up, so people can hear you. Maybe use the microphone.
John Casmer, Chinook Trail, speaking for the Longwood Manor Historical Society. I think there's, you know, one issue I hear right now is that, I think there's a bunch of ordinances here. Longwood Manor Historical is under, is acting under Ordinance 11-2012 that was passed by this, this council in February. And that, that ordinance says that there are building code violations that have to be addressed, which is what we're doing, which I'll get to in a moment. There's, there's, I'm not aware of some of these issues now, all of a sudden, that are coming up. I haven't heard of them before. I know there was a previous ordinance passed by Mayor Migorini which preceded a layer, a later one, which, which recognized the, keeping the manor. That's never been overturned. That was in 1999. I have a copy of that ordinance that was signed by Migorini and I think witnessed by Josephine. So I, I think there's some, there's some issues here. You know, please, we're trying to save a historic house. The only house, you know, historic building that's left in the city of Macedonia for the, for the residents and, and for the future of, of our community. All communities around us have such, have such structures. We, we believe, you know, preserving history is important. The mayor's got a avenue of mayors out here now, of all the previous mayors, going back to Mayor Long. Congratulations, I, your secretary did a good job on that. I see the picture of Mayor Long up there and yourself. That's very nice. Anyway, we've been acting under an ordinance that's currently in effect until March 1st, 2013. That was signed by this, these gentlemen here. We have a building permit, which we already got from the building department to do the, the main beam. We have a contractor who is scheduled to do that this weekend. They're gonna replace the main beam, starting with a new concrete footer, and replace that main, main beam in the house. So, you know, please, we're, we're making progress. We're getting, we're getting givebacks now from the community to help us. We're not, we are not asking for money. We are not asking, I will say that again, we are not asking for, for money. We're trying to raise money by donations, by givebacks from the community. And we're getting that. Macedonia Glass, excuse me, can I, I gotta talk here because this is kind of my issue here. Macedonia Glass just spent a whole day, had a work crew out there Monday. They replaced all the broken windows. There were some broken windows, especially on the south side. And we've already covered those over with wire mesh so they won't get broken again. But there are, there are now businesses starting to come forth to give us support. We've been getting donations from the community, from the residents now this year. So we're starting to make progress. And please don't stop us now because I think we can, I think we can get these violations. The issue right now is getting the violations fixed. That's what's in the ordinance. We have a list of those violations and we're working on it.
Okay. And you know what? I'd like to take this opportunity to thank Macedonia Glass for doing what they did. They're a very community-oriented business we have here in town. And could you give me the name of the contractor again, please, John?
Andre Construction.
Andre Construction is Tony Brudro, who lives in Macedonia, who wants to donate. So I think that's very commendable that you're able to get that, and I commend those businesses and people who are helping. But the question still remains, where will it go from here? We just gotta give John some time, Mike, and see where we go in March.
I would like to see things done right. From what I've read, EPA should be, should come in and inspect first. I mean, Sir, Mr. Hanslick might be able to elaborate on when he informed council that the full amount of the renovation has to be in hand before any work's done. I don't wanna see what's happened for the past 25 years. These groups come in, they spend $2,000, $3,000, do some cosmetic work, and then it's good to pass. They've been working on it for 25 years and it's been condemned. I'm just asking council to make a decision. This has been going on too long. Like I said, I'm not here to say demolish it or renovate it. I just like the decision to be made and to be made in the right way.
I don't think that can happen tonight because there's so many arguments pro and for and against. I apologize for that. I don't think council's ready, am I correct?
I wasn't expecting a decision.
Okay. Yeah. But your words don't fall on deaf ears, Mike.
Well, I'd just like Mr. Hanslick to talk about the thoughts in hand.
Mike? Microphone? Mike, Mike?
I wish I could, but I can't remember. You know, I just, I don't know the context in which I was mentioning that or gave that opinion. It may have been in the context of when the city was still doing all of the renovation and we had to have the money appropriated upfront all in one time. I think that might have been the context within which it is.
I'm not sure either.
Yeah, and I think this probably is a different, it's a little bit different situation because it's a volunteer group that's putting forward the money so far. And the purpose of that ordinance, as everybody knows, that was passed this past February, was basically to call the question, let's get it going or let's knock it down. And that's what it did. Extended the license to the manor house committee to give them a year to get in there and do what they needed to do. They signed releases of liability for the municipality and the clock is ticking and they're, they're moving forward more than ever before.
And council asked for a 60-day extension on demolition or whatever. The mayor asked for some direction and council got another 120-day extension. And they still haven't made a decision. I'm asking why is council making the decisions when the authority falls under the mayor?
I think the ordinance in March pretty much put this forward, that we were giving them a year to correct the violations. That, at that point, we trumped all the stuff from the past that said you have one year to correct the violations. That's where it stands right now and that's what I'm comfortable with.
So it doesn't matter what the charter says, it's what council says?
I can only go by what I'm told. If, if they say that that's a governing piece of legislation, then that's what I know.
Mike, what are you asking us to do? Are you asking us to tell the mayor to tear down the house?
I stated two or three times, I'm not here to say demolish it or renovate it. I'm just saying, council has, has five years to do something. They've taken the mayor's authority away, his control of the house, which it says in the charter, he has authority over the buildings in the city.
I, I'm not sure how that's relevant because what we wanted to do was, we wanted to give the people of the manor house committee an opportunity to continue to raise funds and do repairs and see what they, see what they could accomplish. Because I, 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 what you're telling us is that essentially, we should make a decision to tear it down. Are you saying that we should make a decision to tear it down in the future?
What I'm saying is, council should either make a decision to appropriate the funds needed to renovate it or turn it back over to the mayor.
I think council has made a decision till March.
That's correct. That's why I'm a little confused.
And I think you gotta understand, Mike, that this group, they're just not there in a vacuum. They have architects, they, they have historical architects, they had structural engineers all, all involved. And as some of the past groups have kind of just done their thing, this group is working in conjunction with the building department. They, they now have a building permit. Mr. Alad is supervising it, I hope. And we are, they are moving forward with the, the idea of hoping to save this manor house. The city is not putting money into the manor house. And I believe the next part of the project is the roof, which I believe they have, do you have a contract on it?
It didn't require a plan. I mean, it didn't require a permit.
I understand.
We are, Dunright Roofing is also doing another giveback. They're gonna start after the building beam is in, they're gonna put a tarp, a new tarp over the entire roof to protect it until the roof is replaced.
Okay.
That's a commitment from Tony now, Dunright Roofing.
All right. So, but there has been some investigation as to how to re-roof it. So I, I understand your, your frustration, but I think, you know, council has, has said, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna revisit this in March. And, you know, at least at this point, we're now seeing mortar and this weekend, beams being put into a building that, we've never seen that in 25 years, so.
Is this the same group with Kathy Tomlin?
No.
No.
Oh, yeah. I think she's a senior.
I don't think she's, she's involved with him. I think John's in, John, if you wanna address that issue, I.
What is the issue? She was a member of Longwood Manor Historical. She, she is moving from the community. She'll be moving later this month out of the town.
See, the other thing I think we need to keep in mind too is that the manor house committee was working on the house. And we had a financial crisis in the country in 2008, 2009. And that disrupted funding. It also disrupted fundraising. And so I think for that reason, they deserve a little more time. And then secondly, I, I just wanna remind people that, you know, the city of Canton years and years ago went on a building spree. And what they did was, they tore down a lot of their old historic buildings in the downtown. And what they ended up with was something very dull, very sterile, and quite frankly, not interesting. And the objection came that, hey, we're the Hall of Fame city here in Canton. We do the Football Hall of Fame Parade. And when the parades march through our city and it's shown on television, it doesn't reflect the best part of our community with all of these disparate, rather modern, incongruous buildings and structures. And what they did was, the entire city was able to put together funding. And now if you go visit Canton, they have a much more feel of a more traditional city with, with streetlights, with building, with facades and things. So I think it's very, very important that we give every opportunity to those who are trying to preserve our heritage, the time and the patience to see if they can accomplish that. Because that's what's important.
That still remains that the city ordinance specifically states three to six months. It's been five years. When a resident violates a city ordinance, they're sent a letter, they have to comply. The city hasn't complied with their own ordinance for five years. Where is that fair? What is that telling the residents of this area?
Well, I don't think there's any viola, Mr. Hanslick, is there a violation of the law by permitting this? I, I don't see it, quite frankly.
If I may, when a house is condemned, it must be taken down within 90 days, Mike?
Yeah, I believe it's, I believe it's six months.
Six months. Six months. All right, so the house was condemned, all right? And then it was going to come down and there was an uproar. And very many people on council felt very, very strongly about this issue. And as far as I'm concerned, out of respect for council and their feelings on this issue, we held back. But you're right, it, it was hold back a month, and then it was two months, and then it was three months. I think council's taken a positive step, Mike, by at least saying, we're gonna either get this done by March 1st or it's done. What will happen after that? Time will tell.
What happens if this group goes in? They get a little bit of work done and March comes? If it's not completed, are they gonna put a stop to it? Are they gonna continue to let these groups go in and do bit by bit by bit?
That's a very good question and a legitimate question. I can answer.
But they've been doing this for 25 years.
Yeah. I was involved with it years ago as far as trying to save it, Mike, so about the time you were a councilman. Charlie, you had something to add? Why don't you? See if we can get a different direction here.
Chuck LaPerro, Macedonia. As far as the manor house is concerned, you're all in trouble, no offense. I had the EPA out there a month ago, okay? I've got the documents. They list what has to be done, all right? It is not being done, okay? I am in touch with them every other week. And if anything starts, whoever authorizing, all legally in trouble up there and the law department will help you out. Second of all, I have pictures when that was open of the asbestos in the basement on the pipes. Some group residents went in there with their hands, tore it out, and threw it in our dumpster, okay? Number two, this is all gonna be presented to the legal authorities, there are 10 ADA violations in that building. I am in contact with the ADA too. So anybody who authorizes any work in there before the compliance of what the EPA So anybody who authorizes any work in there before the compliance, what the EPA, no offense, I'm no attorney, you're all in trouble. Thank you.
Are there any other public comments? Please, let's move on. I think we've discussed this enough right now. Yes, Amanda?
It's a different comment.
Okay, that's a good thing. Come on up.
Hello, everybody?
Good evening.
My name's Amanda Coon. Most of you guys know me already. I live on Shepherd Hills Boulevard. I'm actually here because myself and the other residents on our street are trying to get some answers as to when the, when our lawns are going to be restored to their original condition. Our issue is not with, you know, this summer. We know that it was a hot, dry summer. But the contractors did come back last week and proceeded to use a de-thatcher, at least I believe that's what it was, to rough up the ground, which left all of the weeds in place, and they threw grass seed on top of that. I have not seen them since. So I did ask this question of Mr. Feeney, and the response that I got was that they would have an inspector come out and see what was going on. I personally didn't see one, but that doesn't mean nobody showed up. And later on, in email responses, it was, I discovered that there was clover included in the specifications for the grass seed mix for replanting along our street. I don't know how many of you have been down Shepherd Hills Boulevard, but everybody, I mean, it's plain to see, if you look in the neighbors' yards, that we don't have clover and we don't have weeds. But the only thing we really have growing right now is clover and crabgrass. So obviously, that's not restoring our lawns to the original condition. And I know that I speak for several of my neighbors who are here this evening. So I would just like to know what exactly is going to be done to remedy the situation.
Sure. I'd be glad to answer that for you, Amanda. One of the things that I just don't understand is that we really, really have been, as a city, trying to do whatever we can to satisfy all the demands that were made upon us on this job from the get-go. The job was started late because we were trying to take care of all the queries and all the questions about drainage and what's going to happen when it rains. We tried to be as thorough as we could. We tried not to disturb people. Actually, the job overran the cost because we routed piping a different way so that we wouldn't intrude upon a resident's property. We had every right to. We could have taken that resident to court and taken that away from them by eminent domain.
Right.
I refused to let that happen. So the costs went up a lot. The grass situation to me is horrible. I have contacted a landscaper, and the landscaper is giving me prices and working with Nick Feeney at this time.
Okay.
This is one of the most, the best landscapers I know. This particular gentleman does huge, huge corporate buildings. He's very good at what he does. He's talking about killing everything that's there.
Right.
He's talking about reseeding with humus and guaranteeing the lawn.
Okay.
So you will be taken care of. We are in the process of doing that right now. I can't, I'm sorry, I can't tell you he's going to start this weekend, because if he, if I had the stuff, I'd have him start. I perfectly agree with you that it's not right. The grass seed that they use is kind of a normal thing, and yes, there is clover in it, but that wasn't what you had, and that isn't what you should have now. I'm very concerned, and we're following up on you, and hopefully, I can write you next week an email and say, finally, we got it all together. Because we have a contractor that was supposed to do this work.
Right.
The mayor says he needs to hire this man. Now we'll see what happens, okay? That's the best I can tell you right now.
I think that's honestly, and we're not looking to rush it. I mean, if it doesn't get done this fall, none of us are going to freak out. But we want to know that it's going to be done the right way.
I think when somebody says, I'll guarantee it for you, mayor, and I'll take care of it, so that's the guy I want. Now, there's a battle ensuing because, you know, there's certain things that you have to do certain ways, and it's usually not procedure for the mayor to tell a contractor how to do a job. But I'm so concerned over this that I've taken that step. It might not be legal, it might not be according to Hoyle, I don't give a damn.
And I said, okay, if I follow up next week and find out what's going on?
Absolutely.
All right.
Okay.
Then that's what I needed to know.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right. Do we have any other public comments? Yes, sir?
Hello. Thank you for letting me talk. My name's Brian Kormanick, Macedonia Road 9927. I know we talked a lot about the whole building thing earlier and everything, and I just want to let everybody know that the company that was stated earlier today, Ambry Construction, that's doing a lot of stuff there, Public Records, he has been sued 19 times within the past four years. He has pending felony accounts against him. The reason why I'm here is because he personally, I did a job for him, and he took a lot of money from me, from the job, never paid me from it, strung me along for over 90 days until I couldn't put a lien on the job or whatever, and took my money. That was for a VFW where I cut my prices severely on it just to help out. I just want the, you know, the community to know who is doing this work here, and there's, he has over, and I have all the records here from computer public records, he has over $300,000 in owed money that he owes people. His wages were supposed to be garnished, everything, to pay back these people. And I just want to know how he, or is it all volunteer work, what he's doing right now, or how he's getting paid from that right now? And I hope somebody steps in and pays these people off, numerous people, the money that is owed to them.
Thank you for coming up, Frank. Wow. That was, that was a hammer.
Were you like a subcontractor for him?
I was, yes. My name's Brian.
Brian, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
What's your bid on doing that grant?
What's that?
No, no.
Yeah. Okay, first of all, if this gentleman owes people money, can we allow him to work, Tom? I mean, if there's things, I'm sorry, I got that look like, oh, mayor, what the heck, gas we have for?
You answered the question.
There's numerous, there's felony accounts against him right now pending for actually a company out of Macedonia, and I'll mention it, we'll mention the owner's name, Eminem Welding. He's, bad checks to him, and owes him $25,000, that's within the past few months that he's owed him that. I spoke to the owner of the welding company, and I wanted him to come here today. He's out of town, he couldn't make it, and I told him that I was going to come here and mention his company's name, not him, and let him know about it, and he said, I wish I can be there.
Wow.
There's several, several, several companies. And that's not counting little companies like myself that has sent him lawyer papers, everything, that he's ignored, every single one. And I don't really have the extra money through my company or myself to actually go through the process of taking him to court and doing all this. And his records show that he has never paid any of his contractors back. So my lawyer said, basically lost money. You know, that's the bad part about it.
John, who recommended this guy?
Especially for a job, especially for a job for the VFW where I have a place in my heart for.
John, who recommended this contractor?
I'm shocked. I got the name from Mr. Alad.
Our building commissioner?
I did not know that.
Well, it's, that's the sad part about this person, is that he goes around and he does tell everybody he built Walmart in Macedonia, he has done this. No, he didn't build Walmart in Macedonia. Cleveland Construction built the, he built a temporary wall in Macedonia, but that's not what he tells everybody. There's a lot of things that...
And I did hear, yeah.
Well, there's a lot, that's just the, that's just the start of everything. This is, I mean, soon as I, I actually caught all this on Cable 9, the tail end of it, what happened, and I was furious. I mean, I know I'll never see my money back, but if this is the least I can do is stand in front of the community and council to let them know of what's going on and who is working there, I couldn't, I couldn't believe my ears when I heard all this.
Well, first of all, this was going to be donated, so we wouldn't be paying somebody or he wouldn't be owing us anything. So just so I make that clear to you. Mike, what do you got to say about this?
Our past experience with Ambry Construction was at the high school. They did work at the high school with taxpayers' dollars. They successfully completed that project. It's the only experience we have with them. They are licensed and bonded with the city. We don't do background checks.
I would like to comment on that. All dumpsters, all machinery that was used for that job, that is one of the things he's being sued for right now.
Wow.
I missed that. Tell me that again, I'm sorry.
All the dumpsters that were used for that job, all machinery that was used for that job, heavy machinery, that is what he is being sued by Sunbelt and a few other companies right now.
Which job? I was in...
The...
High school.
High school job.
What do you suggest we do then?
I suggest that you find another contractor, I hope, a nice one, that's not going to, or that hasn't screwed up a lot of people's lives so far. That's what I suggest. I would hope that's what would happen. Or if he does do that and he has paid something for it, if it's all volunteer time, not, let him knock himself out. But if he has paid for that, please reimburse the people that are trying to get back a little bit of money out of them.
Right. He is not being paid by us. He was just referred, he offered his services. I'm really shocked. You know, I did not do a background investigation either. We're a nonprofit group, sir, the Longwood Manor Historical. Okay, this man was referred to us, we talked, he sounded very interested in doing this work as give back, you know, to the city. I've had several contacts with him along the way. He did prepare plans, like for the beam, this main beam, that were approved by the building department, so there is a spec on that. If he does proceed with the work, I don't know if he's here listening to this right now, I don't know if he's in town.
There's no money being, there's no money being traded?
Yeah, but if he does the work, it would be inspected by the building department, would have to be signed off on, you know, have to be done promptly. I'm sure they would, they would follow up with that. That's all, that's all I can say.
I don't know, I don't know, I don't know the details of everything. I just wanted everybody to be aware of...
Okay, okay.
We're very sorry that that happened to you.
And many other people, many, many local companies. Thank you.
Thank you. From a businessman's point of view, I think giving back is paying your bills. John, I have a problem now accepting, going forward with this, and I know you've worked so hard and how devastating it is, but would you please consider waiting at least a week so that I can interview this man and tell him, I know what you did and you need to fix it?
Certainly.
All right. All right, we're going to move on to another subject. Yes, sir?
What are you doing this evening?
Hello, everybody. My name's Eric Eisner, and I'm actually a resident of Northfield Center. I came up here this evening because the hot topic of discussion, which is on your agenda this evening, is the senior center. And believe me, I'm all for it. I sell insurance in the community, I sell to the younger people, older people. I grew up working in the golf industry, so I have a lot of appreciation and respect for the seniors in our community. However, I do have some questions about this facility, because it just doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Number one, and you guys will be discussing it later, but this is something that the council can think about. Number one, we're asking for the neighboring communities to contribute an amount of approximately $50,000 to refurbish the old city hall, which is a county building located in another municipality. Now, if I came to council and asked you guys to invest money into my property at my house, you would think that would be absolutely ridiculous. It's, it's not your property to invest in, it's not in your community, nor would you even, that would be unacceptable if you did, in my opinion. But I do have some suggestions for the city of Macedonia that could fund this, get the building back in order at, in my opinion, very minimal cost, so that other communities would not have to pay, and then it could actually become the Macedonia Senior Center, or whatever you choose to use. Furthermore, I don't think that there's even an ability to limit the use of a senior center based on the community. For example, if the ARP chapter of Macedonia has a, has a member from Oakwood Village, are you going to tell them, sorry, you're not able to enter this building? Of course not. You know, it's an open facility that people can use. They might not have the ability to rent that facility, but if a meeting's taking place, surely you're not going to reject anybody at the door. But my number one suggestion to you, and I've looked through the ordinances in Macedonia, is enforce your building codes. The county owns the property. You guys are responsible for upholding your property maintenance to the code. The residents of Macedonia are responsible for that. And as mayor and council, you have a right, along with the building inspector, to enforce those laws. I personally think if the federal government owned property in your community and it wasn't up to standard, that you would have the ability to enforce those rules. So I think that should be the first plan of attack at looking at repairing the building out front. You know, I did have a couple other ideas with that. And I watched your last council meeting on TV, and I know you guys discussed the maintenance of a sidewalk on Crowe. The mayor wanted to replace a section of the sidewalk. The law director clearly stated that the ordinance states that it's the property owner's responsibility. And the mayor and the law director talked about it for a minute, but you said, hey, we might even consider in the future, taking this responsibility on, or that was the mayor's opinion, he'd like to look more into it. Well, I'll be honest with you, if last month, if you had those kinds of funds, because I think that could cost you guys in excess of a million dollars over a six to seven year period to keep maintaining sidewalks, then clearly you guys have $200,000 to get this building in order to open up your senior center. But I'll be quite honest with you, and this is just because you're a public official, I'm a taxpayer, and as you said, you're a business owner. But I'll be honest with you, Mr. Kuzga, there's a piece of property that you are the president of called Kuzga Brother Properties, which is the former gas station that you used to own. And I verified this with the county auditor's webpage, along with the Secretary of State, John Husted's website, so this is information based off of their sites. And that property is currently delinquent, $23,111 in taxes. The delinquent status has been in place since the second half of 2006, but the breakdown of that is that right now, today, the mayor's business property or commercial property owes the city of Macedonia $1,800.
Why are you bringing this up, Mr. Eisner?
Because the mayor came to my community and my trustees and asked for a large amount of money, $50,000.
I don't think it's, I honestly don't think it's appropriate.
Well, it might not be appropriate.
Personal financial dealings.
It's a business financial dealing, but he just stated that businesses pay their bills.
Please, please, let me say this.
Yes.
You're misinformed on so many things, but boy, are you doing me a favor.
Why?
I am so sick of how I've been screwed over that property, and I'm so ashamed of it because it looks like hell, and I sold it and never got paid. I know nothing of any taxes, I receive no information, and don't tell me my address is on it, because my lawyer will handle that with you. My address is not the address of the corporation. So what you are saying is not correct. I did not go to your community and ask for $50,000. I asked them to consider the concept, not approximately, consider the concept of a senior center owned by all of us.
I understand.
And we would get it for a... I asked them to consider the concept, not approximately, consider the concept of a senior center owned by all of us.
I understand.
And we would get it for a buck a year, and we wouldn't do anything on it until all the repairs that were necessary were done. So number one, you're wrong about me owning that company. I sold it. I never got paid for it, but I sold it.
I would like to get the law...
And I'm very, very ashamed of the way it looks, and it still has my name on it.
Well, I'd like to show the law director documentation from John Huestead, the Secretary of State, that states that it's an act of corporation since 1989.
I'm sorry, this is, this is not appropriate. This is, this is not appropriate. This is a totally inappropriate form for you to do so.
Well, all I'm asking is that you're going to ask...
A personal attack is unwarranted.
This is not a personal attack.
Please sit down.
This is, this is...
Please sit down.
Fine.
Thank you.
Is there someone else?
I'd like everybody to meet a lady. Erlene Savory's kind of special. It was about three years ago, Erlene.
About a year and a half.
All right, year and a half ago. Erlene and I met out in front of city hall. While we were in front of city hall, Erlene came up to me and I, I was passing her, and she said, "Mayor, we need a senior center." Thank you, because you're absolutely right. Somehow, some way, we need to get a senior center. Come on up and talk to us, Erlene.
First of all, the gentleman that just spoke, was he from Sagamore?
Northfield Center.
Where?
Northfield Center.
Northfield Center. Okay, thank you. Because I was present at the Sagamore Center meeting, and I don't recall that the mayor spelled out that he was looking for $50,000 from anybody. I think what he said was that we would be responsible for the utilities once the building gets restored, and we were looking for volunteers to help us get the building restored to a point where it could be used as a meeting place, not only for the city, city of Macedonia, but it would be for the four, for townships surrounding this community. And the reason being is that there are a numerous number of clubs, not just the seniors, but we're always looking for a place to meet, a place that we can call our own, that we don't have to go to the Macedonia Methodist Church or the VFW, even though they've been really, really nice to us, very kind, very gracious people. There's, we were at the Eaton Estates Rec Center, and if you are familiar with the age bracket of the people that belong to the, most of the senior groups, we're elderly. I have to use oxygen now. I've got artificial knees. There are people that have back issues. They walk with a cane, or they walk with a walker, they use a wheelchair, and it was a very hard thing to get up the ramp, or this winding, curving sidewalk that goes up to the rec center at Mas, at Eaton Estates. And then also in the summer, we had to compete with the kids using their pool, and I do emphasize their pool, okay? But the point I'm trying to make is that we've been very lucky to have communities around, I mean, facilities around us that would be made available to us. But the problem is, we don't have our place, our home, a place that's ours, that we can call our own, that we can go in, set up the tables that we need for the meeting, and chairs that we need to sit in, and not have to struggle with the elderly people there getting these facilities in place and ready for a meeting. And it's getting very, very hard for us to function and to do that. And I'm not just speaking of my club. I'm a past president of the AARP Chapter 5330 for Sagamore, for Nordonia. The present chapter is, is president is Charlene Barta. And yes, there are numerous areas around that come to our meetings. We are represented by Walton Hills. Seventy-five percent of our people are from Sagamore and from the Northfield Village, Northfield Center and Northfield Village. And all of these people need a place to meet. And like I said, we can get a place, and it was pointed out the other night when we were at the Sagamore Hills, and it turned into, I thought, a personal attack against the mayor and myself, and that we were sitting there, and it was brought up that we could use the Epiphany Methodist Church. I mean, excuse me, I didn't mean that. The Epiphany Lutheran Church. Okay. Well, the Nordonia Garden Club, which has donated tremendous amounts of service to the beautification of this city and Northfield Village and other community projects around. And they were trying to meet there at the Epiphany Church in this tiny, well, I say tiny, it was a room about this size possibly. They put the chairs and the tables already in place, but guess what? We competed with the organist who was practicing on Wednesday nights, and they have a right to be there. And so it gets right back to the same thing. If it's not this building over here that is going to be used and restored for us at a dollar to the city for ten years, and they expanded it again for another option of another ten years, I think that's very good. And the mayor has taken it upon himself to present this as his cause, and we appreciate that very much. And I'd like to thank Jeff Saunders for writing a very, very nice article and bringing this to the attention of all the people that are around and also that are in favor of this. A lot of the people that are in favor of this are not here tonight because a lot of seniors don't drive at night. But it was my understanding that there was a show of hands at the other art meeting. They have over 200 members there, but they can't meet in the summer because there's no air conditioning at the community room at the Methodist Church. So they don't have meetings in the summer. So anyway, but there was a show of hands, and a hundred people raised their hand. Yes, we would like a senior building. Maybe not just a senior building, but a community building, a building that is a meeting place for us to go to, that we can have the things set up, a little kitchenette with a little refrigerator, a place to set up our little hors d'oeuvres, and if we want to, after a meeting, if we want to play bingo, fine. We're all old, we're retired. If we want to play bingo, well, let's play bingo, okay? But it would be our place, okay? It's not that we can't find the place, it's just that we want our place, okay? And if it's not this building over here that people can pitch in and help us with it, well, then come up with something else that would be our building. I would love for us to have a building like Solon or Twinsburg or even Maple Heights or these other little cities around us. But shame on us. This beautiful community, as wealthy as we are, we have no place that a community can call a facility for its club members, its rotary, its chamber of commerce, for any of us, our seniors, our, our Nordonia Garden Club, for any of us to get up and say, "Hey, this is our home. This is our place, and you can't make us leave because it's our place." Thank you very much.
Now you know why I can't say no to this lady.
Mr. Mayor, would it be possible to take a break at this point?
We're going to take a five-minute recess, folks. I'm sorry, but this has been a very, very long meeting so far, and we've got a lot to do. So five-minute recess.